Okay, we are on the clock, everyone, so I will open this meeting of the July 25th, 2025 Commissioners. Off we go. Sheila, be maybe a minute, you want to do payroll real quick?
Make a motion to accept payroll.
I will second that motion, additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Payroll is approved. Let's jump here, here's Sheila. Okay Sheila, you're up and at 'em. Yeah, bring my car and pull it up if you would, please.
Morning. It is time to re-sign a contract, kind of out of breath from running up and down those stairs, for the reassessment contract. So, I did advertise in the newspaper for bids on this, and I received two bids from two different companies, obviously, so I am up here for us to open them, and then I'll grade them on whether or not they met the specs, and then come back before you on the 4th of August. You guys ready? This first bid is from Nexus Group, they are the company that has been doing work in this county since approximately 2,000. For what page the amount is on. Hello, Andrew, are they usually at the back, do you know?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you look at them a lot more often than what I do.
Actually, each one is a little different. Okay, maximum total cost, Exhibit 2, cost containment summary, does that sound right?
Probably. Yes, so the maximum total cost for the four-year period is $976,000.
Because it does have the four-year period up here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. You might need to look at this one, too. Yeah, just in case. It's firmly to ensure. Don't make these boxes very easy.
Somewhere there was like a pull tab thing, but I can never pull it.
Yeah, I don't see one here.
You're just muscling right there.
That's right. That's the firm girl coming out of me.
Uh-huh. There should be, I don't see one, but there should be like a little.
Yeah.
To make it easy to get it open.
Yeah.
There you go.
I didn't see one either. These are binders.
Alright, I'll grab one. Let's take a look.
Thank you very much.
Work plan cost summary, here it is.
Alright, so this is from Tyler Technologies, and theirs is coming in at $892,860. The other one was $976,000, so 80,000 difference. And again, that's a four-year contract.
I'll make the mo-
So, as I say, you're gonna want to do it for her to take them under advisement.
Yeah. I will make a motion to have Sheila take those under advisement and come back to us on August 4th with the recommendation.
I will second that motion, additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Have fun Sheila.
Thank you very much. Right. Thanks, guys. Thanks for working me into, Susan.
Absolutely. Bill, because I like Chris, he asked me last night, he wants to come talk with you guys about the use of the rotunda, so if you want to make him wait, you can, otherwise he is here.
Just put him last on the list. Get up, what do you want?
Hi Sheila. I came to you guys about a month ago, I guess, to ask for use of the rotunda for the big ideas workshop. Talked to Sheriff Thomas, he didn't have any problems with it, didn't have any issues with having his staff be okay with letting people bring in their cellphones. He said courts would be over by that time, so, you know, he would have sheriff walk like they do any other night meeting, make sure no one's on the third floor. I said we could have people staff there, too, if we wanted to, to keep people from going up into the second and third floors, or we could put, I think Larry has.
Barriers.
Barriers, there you go, yeah, thanks, that we could put up, so, but he didn't have any issues with it, so we're looking at doing it probably from 5 to 7 total time. The workshop itself would be just an hour, but I'm assuming we're gonna want to get in here an hour beforehand to get set up and then tear down, so it might be 7:15, 7:30, I guess, before we're out of here. So if that's okay with you guys, that would, September 18th. We would probably do it from 6 to 7, but he'd be here from 5 to 7:30.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Cool, awesome, thank you.
Have fun.
Appreciate it. We'll get the invite. Thank you.
Okay. Board of Finance meeting. Come on up.
Thanks, Susan.
You're welcome.
You're yours, big time.
See ya, Chris.
You know, breakfast in like 20 minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I went before the council last month, or earlier this month.
Do we need to call this to order?
Call it to order, yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Now I get all confused with, okay.
Would we have a president of this?
Is she the president?
Bill is.
Or Bill is the president of this meeting?
I'm the president. Okay, I will call this meeting.
Lucky you.
In that case, to order of the Board of Finance.
Okay. So, I went before the council earlier this month to talk to them about a long-term investment policy, and, because right now, the current investment policy that we approved in January at our Board of Finance meeting only allows for investments up to 24 months, and so the long-term investment policy would be for more than two years, but less than five, which we can do, state statute allows that with council approval, but they deemed that the Board of Finance needs to approve the amended policy first, and then I can take it back to them. So, I believe you will have a copy of the amended policy, but the only things we amended in there was to state that for investment purposes, all earnings shall be received back into the fund in which they were designated at the time of the investment unless otherwise specified, so we just clarified that language in there. And then on page 3, there is a section that specifically talks about the long-term policy, that it would expire after four years, or at a maximum of four years, or at the end of the treasurer's term. So, that's what I'm bringing forward today to see if the Board of Finance will approve those amendments to the policy.
Will you increase from 20 to 25%?
The state statute is 25%, so I believe that's what's been.
In there, okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, I've been helping, running behind the scenes, helping her out to get this to go.
Yeah, so the maximum we can invest long-term would be 25% of the total amount that's invested, so right now, we have $24.8 million invested, so that's just over $6 million that we could tie up long-term. So between the two and five years, we can't invest any more than that in a long-term investment, and we haven't even explored options to see what rates we could get or anything like that, because we don't have a policy yet that would allow us to do that.
What's your dollar amount approximately, they were talking about?
That would be long-term?
Yes.
Right now, we couldn't do more than, I believe it's like 6.2 million is the most we could invest long-term currently.
That'd be the 25%.
That is 25% of the current investment.
And the idea being that like, if it's invested for five years, it's gotta be money that you can't touch for that five years and still pay your bills.
Right, right. We need to be aware of what the county cash flow needs are, and that's where I would work with Susan very closely to see what's coming down the pipeline, what we need to be aware of before we would make any decisions.
Is there penalty if we pull that out early?
You would lose your interest, but you're not losing any principal.
No principal, no penalty.
That's the only type of investment we would do, we wouldn't do one where we could lose principal, we would, we would just lose interest.
I thought I read that, it was.
Yeah.
Want to clarify it for the record?
Yes.
Okay, motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the updated policy for long-term investment.
I will second that motion, additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That does it on that.
Shall we close the meeting then, Bill?
We will close the meeting of the Financial Committee.
Thank you.
Susan, did I sign that now, or?
Yes, you can give it to him to sign, sorry, I forgot. You go down, and I can't get my.
Needs to be heading.
Okay. Let's move on down to claims.
Make a motion to accept claims.
Before I second that motion, I do have a question about a claim.
Okay.
It's a W.W. Williams Company LLC, 007934. Claim is 33680, building repaired and maintenance total, $8,338.56. What was that for, do we know? Do you have something?
Let me pull it up here. That was for Central Dispatch, they had work done on their generator, looks like there was a low coolant level water pump failure that was replaced.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That explains that, in that case, I will second that motion.
Okay.
And additional comments?
Nope.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Claims are approved, minutes? Is there any minutes?
I did, I make a motion to accept the minutes.
I will second that motion, additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on down to miscellaneous topics, we have the misdemeanor reimbursement pilot project agreement signature.
So, our Public Defender program, all but the, what do I want to say? But the misdemeanor cases, they are currently in a program where we get 40% back of all their expenses, everything. We were chosen, Mark Olivero's been working really hard, we were chosen to be a pilot program, to be able to get the 40% back for the misdemeanor cases as well, so this is, we just need to sign this so that we can accept and get 40% back. And it will just be Bill's signature.
Okay, I got a chance to look that over, Andrew.
I did, and if I can share with you guys what I had thoughts on it.
Absolutely.
So, I noticed in Exhibit A that the courts are required to use the same uniform form from the state, but maybe if they're already on a state program for the felony, they may already have been using that uniform form, and it may not be a problem, I just know the courts like to use their own forms or make their own decisions naturally, as elected officials, but I guess that may not be a problem if they're already using the program, and if they want the money, then the, you know, they have to use the same indigency or pauper type form, so that, that's probably not a problem. The budget timing seemed to be a little bit off on it, but it may be accurate, but I noticed that the agreement starts on July 1st, but in September, they're paying second quarter expenses which don't, which end before the contract starts.
It says somewhere in there that it's gonna retro.
Okay, there you go, so it retros, okay, there you go. I just noticed that timing deadline was off, but I guess that's okay, too. The other thing is, I don't know if the council needs to approve the expenditure of the funds, probably not, because they already have, because it's within the budget, it's just repaying budget funds.
Correct.
So the council wouldn't need to approve it, so basically, I approve.
Okay.
So in all honesty, this probably doesn't even need to come to the Commissioners, because Public Defender is a judicial office. Mark asked me, and I told him that I, in my professional opinion, I believe that it would be best for the Commissioners to sign it, because it is a contract, and so he was fine with that, so that's why it's here.
I don't see any harm in it, and it looks fine to me, and probably very good for the county, I would think.
It looks like we can get some of this money back for these public defense that we.
Yeah, and Cheryl in that office does an amazing job contacting accounts payable and myself, because it's not just like their office, so, I don't remember, a few years ago, we had to do like windows and stuff at the Annex Building, and she can get a portion of that back, even though it had nothing to do with her office, because they're in that building, then she can get a portion of that, like we had to do that soffit thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, like she was able to get a portion of that back also, so she's really good at being able to, because it's a lot, it's hard for us to remember on our end, paying a claim, oh yeah, she might want to know that, so she's really good about getting
Good.
info to get that money.
Okay. Sounds like a good deal.
Make a motion for you to sign the misdemeanor reimbursement pilot program agreement.
I will second that, additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, I will sign.
Thank you.
Peterson Consulting Service Agreement.
So this is the annual agreement for my office, Peterson Consultant does our capital assets, and they do all of the depreciation, verify, work with Judy in my office, other departments, to make sure we are capturing everything that we need that is over our threshold, and then they put together a summary sheet for us to use on our annual financial report every year, and it has like land, building, vehicles, construction in process, everything like that, and they, they've been working for us since like 2016, I believe.
It's just $3,895, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a, sometimes, like I looked, last year when we paid it, we had like an extra, like maybe $58, I forget, it was maybe like a administrative fee or something like that, but nothing crazy extra.
I didn't see any red flags with it.
Good. Motion?
I'll make another motion to accept the Peterson Consulting Service Agreement signature.
And I will second another motion, additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Handbook Amendment on Attendance or Educational Meetings Approval.
Yes, that was the information that Dottie had sent around with, I think it was a Senate Bill 409, employees are, the employer cannot go, I don't know, take adverse action on an employee that needs to go to like a child's case conference or attendance conference, so any of the educational meetings that, that I may have to go to for Garrett, you have to let me go, and you, you can't like penalize me for going. So, she did an update for the handbook, and then she'll have a handbook addendum page that will go out for all the employees to sign, and I'm pretty sure that she ran the verbiage through Andrew, and he was okay with it, so she just wanted your approval that we can put this in the handbook, and then she can get the signature sent out.
Yep, she did pass it by me first, and it's something required by state law, so.
And there's not much choice.
Not much choice, and it's required for both government and even private employers.
Oh, is it, really?
I believe it covers both.
It kind of makes sense, I mean, I don't know why we would tell a parent they can't go to a meeting for their child.
Or somewhere along the line, something happened.
I know, it just.
So.
That's sad.
Yeah, I would think I would always let my employees do it, and probably most employers would, but there, there might be some that have like a zero tolerance policy for.
There's always some.
Missing, yeah, the first 90 days of employment, I could see somebody not being able to miss at all for the first 90 days of their employment, and they have a required meeting for their child and lose their job.
Motion?
Make a motion to do the amendment.
Okay, motion, and I will second that motion, additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is approved. Okay, I can never pronounce this quite right.
I can't either.
Shadraba Horse Rescue Contract, that's as close as I'm gonna get.
We'll just say horse rescue.
Horse rescue.
Because I don't know. Okay, so, this might be a.
So I reached out to them, I'll take this one.
Okay, good.
So I reached out to them when I sat down with our new animal control, and Brady, we had a little meeting, and some of the questions, as we're setting up, the animal control officer was, where could she take some of these animals that she would have to take? And it was cats, dogs, and horses were the big ones that she wanted to make sure we had places to take, I reached out to them, they said they could take it with the horse rescue, they were more than willing to do it, so I had Andrew reach out to him with the contract.
Yes.
And then from there, you guys kind of worked out the details. And there was a, somebody had a question, a very good question about, well, who's gonna pick up the horses, we assumed Shadraba would, and we contacted them, and they said they would.
Yeah.
I think we added that to the contract, and.
So the pieces left in it that it looks like I need is, they want us to put like a beginning, when the period's gonna begin, like as of what time in 2025, and ending in 26, and like, we're gonna make quarterly payments, and how, whatever day you want to buy such and such a date.
It'd be like maybe a year contract.
I didn't know if you were starting this now, though.
Or starting it next year. I'd probably start it now.
Because we have the officer.
We have the officer just in case you need it. So we could probably set it from now until next year, January 1st of 2027, and then do a yearly after that, to put it on a nice cycle.
So do you want to just go ahead and make it like retro from like July 1st, so it starts a quarter?
That's fine.
And then end it December 31st of 26?
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that work? Okay.
That way, we get in a nice cycle of the, every year we look at it again. I don't think we've had something for the county for horses, that is, have we yet? I mean, probably ad hoc as needed. We haven't had the animal control officer, we haven't really had anybody that could take a horse against, without issue, so I mean, it's all kind of being built from the ground up, so. This is a good addition, I would think.
You take a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I will second the motion, horse rescue contract, all those, additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is approved. Okay, ordinance 2025-0-4, hyphen DCC, 8-8, 4, I'm sorry, 4-8-2, second and third reading, private pond.
So, you did the first reading last meeting for the Surveyors Office on the requirements that they have for constructing private ponds and their fees, so we just need to do the second and third.
Can we suspend the ruling since Jim's not here?
You don't have to suspend, I'm sorry, but I think you don't have to suspend, because you're not trying to do all three in one.
All correct.
So since you did the first, then you're okay to do the other two.
The statute requires you to do them in at least two different meetings. Okay, I just wanted to double check. The question? I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance for the private pond requirements.
I will second that, additional comments? Comments from the public?
On second and third reading.
On second and third reading.
Second and third reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The Otis Executive Update, I reach out to executive, and they're supposed to get back to me, and they haven't. I think that can be, at the least can be terminated after one year with 30 days' notice, or 60 days. I don't have a contract handy, well, I do somewhere, but.
We have time to look at that. I haven't gotten a bill from them, I haven't even paid them anything for their maintenance contract, so I'm not sure when they bill that. I did pay Otis, and they also charged us a late fee.
Yeah, I seen that, that was nice of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't miss a beat. Listen, I'll reach out again, and retouch base with those folks and see what's going on.
Sounds good.
SRO contract with Garrett Kaiser Butler Corporation.
Yes, so Sheriff Thomas had. Yes, so Sheriff Thomas had emailed me and I even verified last night because I was looking at this. But they kind of do these ahead of school years. So this is actually the next one that would start a year from now. So July of 26. So it'd be for the 26, 27, um, school year beginning. I asked for the changes. The changes, um, they changed the term from five years to three years. And then they increased the wages, uh, cause obviously the officers' wages increase and it hadn't been adjusted since five years ago. So they increased the price. The school will cover, um, it was 55,000 in wages per officer. They're now gonna cover 67,631 plus, um, they pay $2,000 for the vehicle use and $2,500 for police equipment that they may need. And the payment terms, and these are the same, is always one half to be paid on or before August 1st of the school year. So he was just wanting to get your approval on this and.
At 67,000 for salary, 2,000 for vehicle was the other thing, I'm sorry?
67,631 for salary, 2,000 for vehicle and 2,500 for police equipment.
That's what the school's gonna pay.
Yes, that's what this new, and this will start for 26, 27.
Okay.
You looked it over, Andrew? Uh, that one I, it was in an email and I didn't look at it. I mean, it was in, embedded in the email in the.
So, um, we, I don't know if you guys remember, but the last SRO agreement, and I don't remember which school it was, but I, I fought pretty hard because I wanted the amounts specified as to what it was for because I didn't think it was very clear. So this now is the format that has all the clarity in it that I had requested prior and with just the terms and the amounts changed. And that prior one.
I already reviewed that.
Andrew had approved and.
And I'd feel comfortable with it if I've already approved it.
Cause we can always table it to the next meeting if you wa, if you wish.
I'm okay with it. If Andrew's okay with it, so.
Okay.
You raise your motion. I'll make a motion to accept the SRR contract with Garrett Kaiser Butler.
I will second that motion. Additional comments? Comments from the public?
And Sheriff Thomas has seen the contract too, I'm sure.
He gave it to me.
He's the one that gave it to you. So he's comfortable with all the terms and requirements, then it should be okay.
Yep, he asked me if I would bring it in front of them.
Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Okay, courthouse benches. This is an interesting topic, I think.
Yeah, I was a little confused.
I was, I wanna say right off hand and I was upfront and kind of started this up and sought through. The intent was always that they would pay for the bench. And the problem with, if it's a free bench, we got 10 benches. I'm afraid we're gonna get a flood of requests for those 10 benches if they're free. And who, how do we sort that out? Who determines who's gonna get a bench?
Okay, for the dedication?
Yeah, for, if it's, if it's a dollar amount approved, that's gonna, it's first check into the, into the auditor's office. That who, that's who gets the bench in my mind. And it kind of clarifies what the sequence would be. I think it'll show up maybe the, the rate that these requests will come in. And so I, and really, um, if you do a memorial, there's usually a cost involved. And it wouldn't be right for the taxpayers to pick up the cost for a memorial that's gonna have somebody else's, a particular person's name on it. That's my.
I, I agree. I, on what we see, it doesn't totally, however.
Todd misquoted.
It does say that they would upfront the benches.
Yeah.
Um, so, but I, I think it was the intent also for somebody to pay for the bench and the plaque.
Yeah. That was the intent. I remember quite well. A lot of things I don't remember so well, but I do remember that. And so where do you go with it to, uh, to fix it or to change it? Or do we just use it as is, as interpreted, as intent?
Well, what is it now? Is it an ordinance or is it just?
No, it was just different. There were three different, um, meetings. There was only one motion. And that was so that commissioners would upfront the.
That it costs.
The benches, cause they paid for it so we could get them ordered.
So upfront, it means someone's gonna pay it back later.
Yes.
Right. So why don't you just do a motion to clarify? And have it clarified on the record what you meant.
Are we replacing the benches that are currently out there?
Yeah, there's actually two.
I'm sorry. Are we clarifying, we're replacing the benches out there, which I saw the two new ones over here.
Correct, those are.
How many benches do we currently have?
We have.
Not the 10 that we're ordering, but how many do we have in place now?
Four that I know of.
Okay, we had eight, but we are putting out 10. Was that right?
Yes, two more on the south side.
Yeah.
It'll be 10 total.
And you want somebody to pay for the benches that you put out there?
Yes. As a, if they've put a memorial plaque on it.
They can pay for the plaque, yeah, I'm fine with that, but.
They pay for.
If we're replacing the benches that are already our benches, why would we have some mills pay for those, the bench part of it, I guess?
We are only replacing them at this time because somebody had come to, I don't know if it was just Bill or the commissioners. They had come asking about a nice memorial bench, but they did not want a memorial bench in the wood. So they asked if commissioners would be willing to have nicer benches that they would, this person said was so that they would pay for it to have a nicer bench and have the memorial. So the commissioners then had agreed, yes, and went and hadn't ordered them, but.
Do we have 10 benches now?
Yeah.
There would be.
Larry has them all. They've been delivered a while ago, actually.
Well then, now we'll just, if you wanna put a memorial on it, you pay for the, you pay for the bench and the memorial. Is that what the thought process is? Okay. I wasn't, I don't remember this conversation you guys had prior to me being here, so.
And then I think that if nobody wants a memorial and we happen to have a bench that doesn't get a memorial, then the commissioners just paid for it because they wanted them all to match.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we want them all the same. Plaque should be all the same. Be all the same. And other than, of course, the inscription on them, obviously. But anyway, uh, yeah, that's, that was the intent and, uh, and I think we're good to go back to the recording. It was spelled out quite plainly or quite specifically that, uh, the, uh, person that wanted to do the memorial would pay for the bench.
I'm, I'm fine with that, but I would wanna wait till see what Jim's opinion on it is since he's not here right now. I mean, is there a time like we have to get it done today or we can, we bench it till?
We've got one person who wants to get a, I don't know if they've got the plaque yet or not. I've talked to Larry, but I guess we can wait.
Yeah, I mean, there's no big hurry on it. See what his, what his, his opinion on it is and then go forward. But I, I'm okay with putting the benches out and if someone wants to put a plaque on, they have to reimburse for the benches and everything too.
You just said one thing, then you said another thing, so.
I agree with what you're saying, but I think we should still wait till see what Jim has to say.
Well, in that case, I'll make the motion.
I'm not gonna, I won't get Jim to come have his opinion on it, so.
Something we could do and clean up. Okay, County Home, June 2025, report acknowledgement of receipt.
I'll listen to that in between.
Okay.
Um, yes, this is our, and. That's our normal monthly report for sunny medals that we accept.
Yep, I've seen it. I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, to acknowledge the receipt of report for the county home for June of 2025.
I will second that motion. Additional comments? Comments in the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
I do an update with Sunny Meadows since we're on it right now?
Sure.
So we had, um, we've had three residents now transitioned out. We had one at the beginning. We had two of this month. One has moved to another facility. One moved back in with her mother. Um, and we have two more that are being transitioned to another facility today. Um, somewhere between nine and 10 o'clock today, they'll be transitioning. I will be swinging by afterwards, after this to double check to make sure everything goes as smooth as we would like. That would decrease, I'd be five that has been transitioned out. We will be down to 13 at this point.
Good deal.
If I sign down here, Susan?
Yeah, just on those lines.
Woodsland Lakes RCND Land Trust Contribution Request.
So. We haven't paid into this place since 2022 and I don't even know if we've gotten a request the last couple of years. I remember one a few years ago and we didn't take part in it. But when one of the members had come with Soil and Water for their budget presentation, I asked if I had gotten the receipt and I, or the invoice. I said, not that I know of. Um, so anyways, he had their treasurer, another member, send it to us. So I guess we have to decide if we want to pay $500 as an annual contribution to them.
I'm not in favor of paying this to a private entity. Uh, it's not our responsibility. And I appreciate their cause and all that, but I just don't think that we can be paying this money out. What do you think, Ellen?
I don't even really, I'm not really sure what they do. I mean, I was trying to read through here and try to figure out exactly what they do.
It's kind of like acres.
Yeah.
Similar program. Conservation of farmland, basically.
I'm fine with not paying it either. I'm not really 100% sure what it is, so I would, I don't wanna pay something I'm not 100% sure on, so.
I.
I mean, it says, I mean, it helps.
Don't either.
Conservation of easements on farmland, woodland and wetlands, responsible stewardship. I'm just not sure how they, they do that. I don't know what the money would go towards. I mean, it'd be nice if we could have, I think Jeff Conrad's our decal rep, it looks like. But to have, come in and have a conversation and maybe explain what exactly that money would go towards. As of right now, I would not be in favor of doing it.
Yeah, I agree.
And maybe if you wanted to talk to somebody at Soil and Water, maybe they would be able to explain it. I have no clue, honestly.
Yeah, I, I don't have enough information to be willing to pay it.
You want to table it?
I'm fine tabling if it's what you wanna do.
We can table it.
Till we get a little more information of exactly what that money goes towards. I don't, I'm not a big fan of putting money towards something I don't know what it's gonna go for, so.
Okay.
Definitely taxpayer money.
Okay, measures monthly financial report acknowledgement, January to June.
So. I got a email from the state, oh, about a month ago. I don't know. Apparently, so we get these sheets every month from the treasurer. She does this every month, four years. And we stamp them, we get them, we file them. Well, apparently as auditor, I'm supposed to give it to the finance board, which is you guys. Also give it to the commissioners, so the commissioners accept it and see it. And then I, as the auditor, have to file the treasurer's report to the state. And I asked the state what you guys needed to do so that they know that I'm giving it to you. And there's nothing. So I guess we'll just, did the first six months of '25 so that we can be compliant. And I guess we'll just acknowledge that I gave it to you in the minutes in case they ever ask. And then each month, we'll just acknowledge that I gave you the next month.
I did go down through that. I looked at it and it's, there's a lot of numbers in there.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what the purpose is besides statute says that I have to do it. And Joni already, and even Sandy, when she was treasurer, they already send this to the state every month, but apparently I have to do it also. Cause I need something else to do.
Something, yeah.
So if you guys would kindly acknowledge that I sent them all to you, I would appreciate it.
Motion to acknowledge?
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the financial, monthly treasurer financial report from anyway to June.
I will second that motion. Additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, that's the end of the list.
Yep.
What else we got? Andrew, anything?
Uh, let me, yeah, don't. Uh, right now, I don't think I have anything.
Can you do an update on Baymont?
Yes, Baymont and maybe even, uh, Country Inn and Suites. So, um, the, uh, the county, uh, has been, had filed lawsuit against two different hotels operating in Auburn that were failing to pay their innkeeper's tax on time. Uh, the first one, uh, was the Baymont Hotel and we did get a default judgment there. Within a day or a couple of days of, uh, the hearing on default judgment, they did end up paying their last overdue monthly amount, but they had paid no, uh, penalties on it at all. And they hadn't paid the attorney fees for us having to pursue this in court to get them to pay. Uh, so we got a judgment against them there, uh, in the Baymont case. And then a couple of weeks later, we did the same thing in the Country Inn and Suites case. Uh, they, however, still owed some back taxes. It looks like the Country Inn and Suites may have tried to dissolve their corporation or at least remove it from active. It's like a foreign corporation in another state. They call it foreign corporation or foreign LLC operating in Indiana. They removed their registration for that, saying they're not operating in Indiana anymore. So it may be a challenge to collect on that one. The Baymont Hotel owned the real estate along with running the hotel. And so we have a judgment on the real estate now and if they try to sell it, that judgment would need to be paid to clear the title. But we should get paid on the Baymont case eventually because of that. The Country Inn and Suites case, we may not be paid, but we're making the point that you're willing to enforce these and not just let hotel owners keep the money that they should be holding to pay to the county for the innkeeper's tax. So we've, we've, we've gotten judgments or won the cases on both cases.
Now, my understanding, and Joni can probably back me up, is they're still, they're paying, but they're paying late now? Yeah, come on up.
Yeah, for their, on Baymont, for their 20.
Add on, Joni?
Yeah, it's on. For their 2025 innkeeper's tax, they're paying the innkeeper's tax, but they're paying it late. Out of the last six months so far this year, so January through June, five of the payments have been late. So every month, we invoice them for the late penalty per the county ordinance. penalty per the county ordinance, and he's not paying...
He's still not paying the late fees?
Still not paying the late fees. So he's up to, as of today, I don't believe we have gotten his report for June that would have been due in July, but the last bill that Sandy had sent him was on July 20, wait, the last bill she sent him. He owed $582.03, and he doesn't respond to the bills at all. I was looking through the ordinance, and it does not say what recourse we have on the penalties. It only says if the innkeeper's tax remain, remains unpaid 60 days after the date in which it's collected, it'll be turned over to the county attorney. But it does not tell us what we can do about unpaid penalties.
I think you could still have the county attorney do that because it's owed to the county.
Okay.
I would take the position that we can still file a lawsuit over the penalties. It's not worth it financially, probably, to do it except maybe every year. No, otherwise you're going through the hassle of creating a complaint, paying me to, you know, to do that and to file the case, especially, you know, it's not worth doing it over, let's say, $75 a month, you know. In fact, we might be able to even do it as a small claims case, potentially, if it's under $10,000.
I'd just like to see us do something because he's going, he's made a pattern out of this. He does not pay the penalties, and so I think we're going to be back in the same boat if we wait too long.
Sure. It's an improvement that he's actually paying the, but he's still not paying the penalties. I think that, I think we need to discuss at some point soon how hard you want me to pursue both companies for collection on the judgment. Once, there's some technical changes that the, that we've needed to make to the final judgments, and once those are both in, we're going to, well, I'll get you guys a copy of it and also get a copy to Amber with the Visitors Bureau. And then we have to wait 10 days after the final inked order from the court, judgment from the court, and then we can begin collections. And if you want me to pursue collections there, I can. I'm assuming you do probably want to.
I think I made my stance very clear on this, so.
Okay.
I mean, we have to wait for the final everything first, so it's not...
Right, they, everybody gets 10 days to pay it after the judgment's entered, so. But it took filing a lawsuit, in my opinion, to get them to pay the amounts owed. And in fact, they waited till like a day before, I think, the final hearing to pay the last bill owed from September of 2021. So they're just forcing us to do this to get them to actually pay, at least on Baymont, so.
Okay. Clear that up as much as we need for now?
Yeah, just come with some options next meeting, what we can do. We can discuss it, what we do next.
Ellen, you have anything else?
Um, no. I mean, I did a Sunny Meadows update, so.
Oh, good.
I'm all good.
Susan, what you got?
I'm done.
I am, too. I'm done also. Anybody, anybody from the public?
Lita. Wait. Sorry. I just need her when we're done.
Okay. Nothing from the public? So in that case, I will call this meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.